Good morning. The August 11th Board Workshop to discuss open metrics and the emergency rule policy requiring face coverings is now in session. Pam, please call the roll.
This is Belford. Mr. Susan?
Present.
Ms. McDougal?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
We will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, we will be revisiting the metric discussion and current trends in Brevard concerning COVID-19. With us today for questions are our partners from the Department of Health, Maria Stahl, Bruce Pierce, and John Davis. They're also going to give us an updated trend since our last meeting. Go ahead, Ms. Stahl.
Good morning, everyone. Yes, I'll give our numbers and the trends over the last two weeks from the last Board Workshop where we were here on July 29th. Again, it's important that we look at the trends and not a static number on any given day because it does bounce all over the place depending on how many labs were reported out on any given day. And these statistics I'm going to read are from yesterday because today's report actually comes out at 11:00 today, so it's not released yet. But as of yesterday, we had 6,099 cases. The median age was 53. And I can tell you the trend has been continuing between 41 and 58 as far as the median age goes. The positivity, lab positivity rate for the last two weeks ranged from 3.8% to 8.6%. There's only one day that was higher than 6.7% and six days were actually below 5%. The state, the last reported state RT number is .91. And again, as I said last time, the RT number greater than 1 shows the virus is replicating more rapidly and less than 1 is less of a spread. Our deaths as of yesterday, we had 151 deaths and I have to say, I really, I hate talking about deaths as numbers because they really are people that are affecting families, which is, I just hate the numbers here. But we had 151 numbers. The ages go from 41 to 103. They dipped down a little bit from last time, but 89 of those cases related to individuals in long-term care facilities. Our hospital status and capacity has stayed very stable. As of yesterday, there was 29.9% of hospital bed availability. The ICU availability was 23.43. And that truly has not wavered a whole lot. Our hospitals, like I said, are busy but doing well. The pediatric report that I showed, that we showed last time, that I said was weekly, is now daily. They did increase that to a daily report. As of yesterday in Brevard, 4,462 children under the age of 18 were tested. There were 336 positive cases at a 7.5 positivity rate. As I say that, we are the lowest in the state with positivity rate. We are not the lowest in the state with testing, the number of tests done, but we are the lowest in positivity. Overall, we're number 11 in the state as far as number of tests done. There's only two, am I saying states, I mean counties. There's only two counties that are lower than us in positivity rate, overall positivity rate, and there's two counties that are the same as us. Statewide, there has been seven deaths in children. That increased a little bit from last time. One in the 5- to 10-year-old range, two in the 11- to 13, and four in the 14- to 17. Brevard has seen no children's deaths. We've had one case of auto-inflammatory syndrome, multi-inflammatory syndrome, and that was in an individual in the age of 20. So that's looked at at age 21 and below. So overall, the messaging, and if I can't say one thing, it's stay home if you're sick. And that's teachers as well as students. Stay home if you're sick. Social distancing, avoiding crowds, hand hygiene, masks when you're in public places and can't maintain social distancing, and the regular cleaning, especially the high-touch surfaces. So there's the overall trends. I'll hand it over to Bruce to add.
Really don't have much to add. I think the overall message is children do well. Adults and teens are the major spreaders and we need to keep that in mind as you implement things. Masks do work. And I think if we continue to do what we know we are supposed to do, we will do well.
Okay. With that, I'd like to open it up for discussion. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Stahl and the team?
Go ahead.
Ms. McDougal?
I do, I just have one quick question. So I just want to have, be real clear. Our positivity rate currently is, what again?
Overall, since the beginning of our testing, it's been 7%. It ranges on any given day. When you look at the daily report that comes out, you'll actually, on the second page of the report, it'll show you what the positivity rate is for that day. But the positivity rate overall is 7%. But in the last two weeks, the positivity has ranged from 3.8 to 8.6. Six days have been less than 5%. One day was higher than 6.7%. So the 8.6% was one day out of 14.
So when we average it, you're saying that we're at 7%?
7% since the beginning, since we started testing in March.
And so currently, I mean, do we do, are you looking at this on a weekly basis or are you just doing cumulative?
The 7% overall is cumulative since the beginning of time. I say the beginning of time, it's March when we started testing.
It does like the beginning of time.
But, but it's daily positivity rate and it's depending on whatever labs report out that day.
And so to, so basically, any, as I remember last time you were here, you said anything under 10 is good?
That's what Governor DeSantis has said. Governor DeSantis is pleased with single digits. He has had a press conference where he actually praised Brevard because we were in single digits. But as I say that, there is no state or CDC guidance that says above or below. There are individual organizations, someone brought up American Academy of Pediatrics and who has some things, but CDC and the state do not have specific above this or below this.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, you have some questions?
Sure. Well, just in response to Ms. McDougal's, I just emailed you guys just a little while ago, updated, doesn't have the numbers from yesterday because as Ms. Stahl said, they don't release those till 11:00 each day and I'll update those when they come through. But I've been tracking, because you mentioned last time, our rolling averages. I think the 14-day rolling average, 7-day rolling, both of those are mentioned. So in the spreadsheet that I sent you, I've been tracking both of them. And so as of yesterday, our 7-day rolling average is 5.5 and our 14-day rolling average is 5.6. And there's a little, pretty little chart and everything. If anybody wants me to send that, I'll be happy to send that to you. But I did send it to the board this morning that most updated. So, okay, so, does anybody have a question on this topic? Because what I, my next thing is kind of off that topic for just a little bit.
If you have any questions for the Department of Health?
Yeah, for them, but not, it's not on the same topic if you wanted to go first.
I don't have a question, but this, I have a question for you and this chart.
Okay.
So when, the red line is the 7-day rolling average and the 14 days, I mean, the green line is the 14-day rolling average?
Yes.
So can we, I guess it's, I need them to see this to ask the question. It looks like, because if I recall either what you all said or maybe what the American Pediatric Association said, we're looking for a decline over a two-week period. Yes, is that?
Ultimately decline, but I think stability. I think we don't want to see trending way up.
Up. Okay. Then if Ms. Campbell's data is all correct in here, the green and the red line are trending down. And that's seven days and 14 days, a little tiny, no, they're trending down.
Ms. Deskovic, can you, or Ms. Campbell, can you refer the data that you were just saying so that Department of Health officials?
So that is every day at 11:00, the Department of Health releases the, yes, thank you, because I'm, people know I'm making this up my head.
No, I just, because the people on the, yeah, the people on the call are going to wonder.
So you can go to the Department of Health's website, they have a, if you go to Florida Department of Health, it'll have a COVID link and you can, it'll, you have to scroll down and it says county, county updates, I believe. And there's a link and every day it's updated with the testing data for the whole state and every county. It includes all the demographic data, the number of deaths and hospitalizations and all of that, the median age for each, for the whole state and as well as the county. And so there's lots of different places where people are getting data, but ultimately they're taking their data from this same, this is all of the testing. And I just want to make the point because somebody had said, a couple people have said to me something about, you know, testing, all testing was shut down a few weekends ago because of hurricane. That's not true because the state site was shut down, but there was data. Can you tell us about kind of how that went that weekend?
And most, most places, including our testing sites, were, you know, were closed Friday, Saturday, we don't test Saturday, Sunday, the state does. But they were all down for three or four days.
Right.
But as I said last time, the daily report is whatever labs report out that day.
Right.
So if we see, and you have seen in the last couple of days, there's been a few, there's been lower labs reporting out than there has been other days. And I'm sure that's 100% related to the testing sites being shut down for those couple of days.
Right.
But that's why you really can't look at numbers. You really have to look at the trend of positivity.
Right, the trend.
Because, yeah.
Right. So, so the reason why I think this data, the data that you pointed us to, the Department of Health data still is good for us is because, one, it still was showing 700 to 800 on those three days around the hurricane, which some of the hospitals I'm sure were testing because if you have to go to the hospital, they test you when you go in, right? Long-term care facilities are testing on a regular basis.
Correct. And the other thing I will say, I don't remember what it was two weeks ago to tell you the truth, but currently, the lag time for our labs are about five to seven days.
Gotcha.
So that's, you know, you may see, we're about a week out now from, a little over a week out from when things were shut down from the hurricane.
And so if there had, for everybody who was waiting and didn't go tested then, it would have been kind of a dump in the next week, the following week. That's why I bring that up because eventually it's going to all catch up. That's why you have the rolling averages.
Correct.
Okay. So, did, does that answer your?
Yeah, it sure does. I just, I think we should, as a district, publicize Ms. Campbell's data on a regular basis because if, if we're going to go with a rolling average...
It's not my data. All I did was take what was here and put it on a spreadsheet because I couldn't find a place that showed rolling averages. And so all I did was take the data that the Department of Health is putting out every day and it updates. Whenever time they updated a day previous, I make sure to update those and then just put it in a form that was easy for me to see and share that. It's just averages.
And Ms. Campbell, thank you so much for doing that because there is a lot of opportunity for people to be looking at numbers that may be two weeks past, one week's past, because when you consistently search, you're looking at different times. And so the Florida, you might actually, Florida today's been pretty good about keeping up with it, but you might pull an article that has better trend rates on the social media from two weeks ago and then may pull that. The other opportunity that they have is if you go to the Department of Health's website, you can download by county into Excel spreadsheet. So you don't have to consistently add to it, you can just download all the information and it's available too.
Well, you said, told me that before.
Well, you can, but I do commend you for bringing that up because I think that the time that, and where you get your data from is, you know, you have to get it from the source, so I wanted to say thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Good point. And I agree with you, Ms. Deskovic. I think that there should be a link to that so that people can go to somewhere on our pages that they know where to go to get the actual rates.
Well, it just sounds like we are very interested in focusing on 14-day rolling average of positivity rate. And if that's what we're focusing on, then this chart shows that. And if we watch it daily, we'll see if there's a big spike, we'll see if it's trending up, and then we can reevaluate and make better decisions for our district.
And I would also know that, I'm sure that our trusted cabinet in the back is looking at those daily rates too and making sure that that's part of our conversation also. So thank you so much for doing that. Ms. Deskovic, do you have any other questions for the Department of Health? Ms. Belford, do you have any? Can you hear me?
You reiterate, who remained open during the time and who closed down during that time?
Are you talking specifically during our last storm?
Yes, when the sites were shut down for the...
Okay. Yeah. What, what everyone needs to remember is the testing sites outside, except for maybe long-term care and hospitals, they're outside. They're outside under tents. So during inclement weather, they will be shut down. I can tell you, our Department of Health site on thunderstorms in an afternoon, we shut down, even maybe for a couple of hours. And we have had our tents blow away. So that is the reason they're shut down. During the last storm that we had, and I'm just going to say hurricane or tropical storm, I, because I have no idea how to say it. But during that time, the Eastern Florida State College closed down Thursday. They were down, closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. They reopened on Tuesday. Our site, we closed down in Vieira Friday afternoon and we reopened on Tuesday. I cannot specifically tell you Parish's site of when they closed down nor Omni's site when they closed down. But I would anticipate it, it's very similar to at least the Friday and the Monday because we need the day to take down the tents and another day to pull them up. So, but I would say a three to four day for everybody over that length of time, except 100%, the hospitals were still testing, long-term care facilities, if they were testing, were still testing.
So in the hospital setting, are they testing their employees or they only testing patients? Do you know?
Bruce, do you know that? Yeah, there's testing, you know, when you go into a hospital, it's not going to be a routine testing for patients. It's going to be if the doctor feels the testing needs to be done. And, and I need to reiterate, hospitals are not the place to go to get tested. Hospitals are the place to go when your respiratory symptoms start deteriorating and you need to go to the hospital. So we cannot be inundating the hospitals on testing. When I say Parish does testing, they, they actually have their van that they're taking out in the community and they're doing testing at offsites. And so is Health First. Health First is doing their testing on Merritt Island also. As far as the routine testing of employees, that I don't know. That would be an individual hospital question. But the patients are if, if the physician deems it necessary to be tested.
Okay. And the long-term care facilities are still routinely testing their employees, correct?
The long-term care facilities, that was an executive order by ACHA. They, all of their employees and contractors need to be tested every two weeks. We do have the state incident management team that does come out and assist with patient testing if there's something going on in that long-term care facility. But what they do is they actually have kits sent to them directly and they do their testing and send it off. But it is required every two weeks.
Okay. And do you have any idea if the long-term care facilities are testing more frequently or are they all following the two-week mandate or do we know?
I, I assume they're doing the two weeks and not more frequently. I don't know if there would be a need necessarily to do more frequently. But different facilities are requesting testing of their clients. Some are being done privately, some are requesting the testing through IMT, which is the incident management team, which is the regional team. When I say IMT, it's the regional team.
Okay. So when we're, I'm just, my concern is that the shutdown would potentially impact the, the data that we're receiving. So obviously, we need to look at a trend, but it would seem to me that even a trend would be impacted by several days of very low positivity rates if, if the majority of the tests coming in are, for example, long-term care facility employees who are being screened on a regular basis versus people who are being tested because there's a likelihood that they are, you know, they're showing symptoms or something like that if the, if the testing sites were shut down. Do you, can anyone kind of weigh in on the...
I, I...
...relatives and data points?
I actually think that it might be the reverse because I think if your testing sites are being shut down for three or four days, those that are being tested are the symptomatic people that are being tested. They're the ones that are showing up at the hospitals and being tested. But I have to tell you again, and I can't reiterate this enough, you can't look at the number of cases per day. You have to look at when it's reported out. The numbers are the numbers of labs reported out that day and the positivity rate is of those labs that are reporting out for that day. But yes, when they're shut down, the people that are sick are going to be going to the hospitals for testing. So I actually might think it might be a little reverse.
Okay.
Bruce, do you have anything to weigh in on that?
No, no. We really don't have a good idea of how many are symptomatic, how many are asymptomatic that are getting tested either. The other thing that you have to keep in mind is probably the burden of disease is anywhere from 5 to 10x whatever it is you're reporting. We never get 100% capture of anything.
Can you say that one more time?
We never get 100% capture of anything. So whatever is reported is a lower percentage of what actually is there.
So you anticipate that our positivity rate is actually 5 to 10% higher than what's being reported?
That's what CDC's putting out, not me.
Okay.
But that's nationwide and worldwide, not just county. And that's just because the whole population is not being tested.
How does our percentage of population tested in Brevard County compare to other, other counties? I know you mentioned the number of tests, but I feel like size of county factors into that.
I don't have that number. Is it 14% John? 14% of our population has been tested. Our state goal is to have 2% of our population tested every month for the last several months. And we have truly exceeded that. I think the month of July offhand was like 7.6%. This month already, we've had 1.6% tested and that's, we're only a little over a week into the month.
But we don't have any, do we, we don't have a county-by-county comparison, right?
I mean, I have it, I don't have it in front of me.
Well, but didn't you tell us, Ms. Stahl, hang on?
I could, I could send it, I could send it to Chris and she could get it out.
Didn't you tell us that we were number 11 in counties of the number of tests done?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Yes. We're number 11 in the counties of number of tests done. And you know, you figure above us are your, you know, your Miami Dades, your, your Browards, your Palm Beaches, your DuValls, your Oranges, your Hillsborough, Pinellas.
We're the 11th largest county, so that's pretty consistent.
Right.
Ms. Belford, did you have any more?
I apologize, ladies and gentlemen. Okay. Thank you. Last time we talked, Ms. Stahl, there, we had talked about the way that negative tests were counted. Do you know, has there been any progress on being able to identify how many of our tests are duplicate?
Well, like I said last time, the positive tests are not duplicates.
Right.
Okay? I can also tell you, I mean, you know how the state is counting. The state is counting, every negative gets reported as a negative. I can also tell you that probably if you talk to 10 different states, they're, they're looking at it 10 different ways. I can tell you, all epidemiologists and all statisticians are going to look at things a different way. But what I can say is these numbers are being calculated at the state level and this is the, our state has felt this is the best way to capture these numbers. So I have not heard that there's going to be any change in the way that they are reporting these out. Bruce, do you have anything?
No. With any data set, there's going to be, there's going to be challenges and that's a fact.
Sure.
Secondly, we, we see only, we see every positive that comes through, we don't see the negatives. So that's all handled at the, at the state level.
So those negative counts don't even come through you all, it just, it just goes to them for the inclusion in the...
Right, because they don't need to be investigated. So we investigate all the positives, the negatives are just off our radar.
Okay. So do you all happen to know, if we look at the total number of positive cases in Brevard County compared to our population in Brevard County, do you know what that positivity rate would be?
Not off the top of my head, no.
The, the total number of positive cases in Brevard County?
Which was 6,099, right?
Yeah.
Divided by 591.
1%?
Our population is...
600,000.
Like 1%. But that's a number that's never going to go down. Right. It is always going to go up because you can't, it's not the current, I mean, what we, the number that we can't pinpoint is currently in Brevard County, how many people are still positive and infectious because you can't ever nail down, some of them, you know, are, it's short-term, some of it's long-term, you know? That's a number that we would love to all get to, but we can't, right, we won't ever be able to put our finger on that exact, because we don't capture recovered. And people say, why can't we capture recovered? Well, how do you, y'all are contact tracing. You can't call everybody who's had a positive test and say, are you over it yet? You know, and, and how are you going to know you're over it yet? You know?
You're right. Which is, the standard truly is from diagnosis of case, if you go, you know, two weeks out, probably recovered. The numbers aren't being captured and recovery numbers are being captured again differently by everybody. But predominantly on an, I mean, would you agree with me, Bruce? About two weeks after diagnosis of the case, you're going to be fine. I mean, the standard to return to work, which I think we've, which I said last time, is 10 days from the start of symptoms or the asymptomatic positive test, 10 days and 24 hours, no fever with, with no medications. So that's even less than the two weeks.
The, I think you mentioned that our current time for return of tests, are we still, did you say 5 to 9 or 7 to 9?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
The number of days it's taking us to get results on tests?
Results back, yes. Every lab is a little bit different, but I would say the average is 5 to 7 at the current time.
So do, would you feel fairly certain saying that in this, at this point in time, we have closed the lag on the time that the, the testing sites were down?
Yes.
So you don't...
Yes, I would, I would think at this point, yes. As I say that also, when I say the 5 to 7 days, there are priority testings. And the priority testings that go to the state lab are coming back in two days, two to three days. On the state call that we had yesterday, Dr. Rivkeiser, Surgeon General, did say that the pediatric symptomatic, symptomatic pediatric clients are, are going to be a priority, you know, when we get going here. So a pediatric symptomatic, we should get back maybe in two, two to three days.
Okay. And the, you probably are, have heard or are familiar with what's going on in Hillsborough County as far as them making a decision to, to return to online learning for the first four weeks. Their health department in Hillsborough County did a presentation at their board meeting and they provided some information that broke down the number of cases per day and kind of categorized it. So they had, they had red, orange, and yellow. and kind of categorized it. So they had, um, they had red, orange, and yellow, red, orange, yellow, and green based on the number of new cases per day per 100,000 people in their area. Is that a data point that you all are looking at at all?
No. I mean, a- a- again, when, when you look at this, you're, you're only talking about what you know, not what you don't know. And what, what you don't know is what will bite you. Um, so what we know is what we know. And what we know is really how to mitigate, and that's what we need to focus on in, in our opinion, and that's the messaging that we're pushing out, is how do you mitigate this stuff? Um, and as long as people are doing the right thing and, and we're helping them by helping them default to the right decision, then things get better.
Okay. Um, I think that is all the questions that I had. Any other board members? Mr. Susan?
Yeah, because I was waiting to go after you. I apologize. Is this thing on? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
You just got to be close.
All right, um, so I had a couple of questions, and I was going to go through them. You had mentioned hospital beds were hovering in the 20, there was a percentage that you gave. Um, my question is, is, we had talked before about hospitals being able to convert beds into more ICUs. Is that percentage based in there or just currently now?
Yeah, that percentage is, is currently now. So that's not enacting their surge plans at all. So, yeah.
And then, in your, I know it's hypothetical, but if you, in every hospital, they can expand the number of ICU beds and increase that number. And I guess it's based upon the, the hospital, so like Holmes might have a bitter, a bigger opportunity to do that than some of the other hospitals, right?
Yes. Um, I can say Rockledge Regional is now accepting the patients from Melbourne Regional. Um, actually in Sebastian too, which is outside of our county. So you do have the Stewart network, which is a little bigger, so you have that. Um, but yes, I mean, Health First has four hospitals, so, yeah.
So one of the issues that we were talking about, the metrics, was I was looking at the opportunity for the ICU beds to be full, right? That was one of my metrics that I was trying to pin down. How do I, as a board member, know, right now we have 20-something percent open, right? But then all of a sudden, that number could actually be 40% open because Health First or Stewart may have more opportunities in beds. Is there a way to judge that or no? Because the hospitals are the only ones that know how they can convert their ICU beds, right?
Right. They're the ones, they have their own, every, every hospital system has their own surge plans.
Yeah, okay.
Which in their surge plans, that's all listed in there. I do not know the details of each hospital.
Nor, right.
But what I can tell you is we, in fact, this afternoon is one, we do have hospital calls-
Right.
With each hospital. We had them twice a week. We just cut down to once a week. And discuss that very thing. How are they doing? Are the, you know, and that, that sort of thing. But I can tell you through the whole duration here, our hospitals have been fine.
Awesome. And then the next question that I had was, um, what point, if we're at 20-something percent and you feel confident about that, at what point does it become, does the, does the CDC or any other recommendations out there? Because I know you, you know what I mean, it's difficult to give these. But, um, at what point does the, does the hospital ICU bed situation become a, a, a real bad factor? Like, is that at 10% open, 5% open? How, how, what point would that dart be thrown at to where that becomes an issue?
Well, hypotheticals are always a challenge.
I know, I know, and I apologize about doing that to you.
So, so the, the reality is it's based on their ability to respond. So when they, when they say, "We can't do it anymore," then that's when you've got a problem.
Yeah, I, I get that. But like, how do we know ahead of time that, hey, Houston, we have, we're going towards that problem? Like, hey, we're at 23 this week, we're at 10 this week, we're at 5 this week, now we have a problem? Or how does that work?
You, you won't, I mean, they're monitoring their workflow, they're monitoring their capacity and all that. It's like if, if, if a plane crashes tomorrow, how, what does the ER do at that point?
Okay.
That's kind of what I think you're asking. And I don't have an answer for that. That's, that's a possibility.
What I, what I can say is the hospitals are in constant communication with ACHA, um, and with us. When they see themselves in a danger zone-
Right.
They're going to sound the alarms before the danger zone is hit. And, you know, I talked last time, the three levels of surge. And the first surge is within their own hospital and, um, converting their own beds. You know, when they reach that point that they're at, at stage one surge, um, and they're converting their own beds, then we're also looking at capacity of other hospitals because that's stage two.
Right.
So parish reaches theirs, they may need Rockledge Regional's help. So when we're at stage one, we're looking at stage two. When we're at stage two, we're actually looking at stage three. Um, I can say early on, and it might have been the end of March, beginning of April, we were actually looking at facilities in our county to convert to hospitals if we needed to. We had one in North County and one in South County. Um, we never had to do anything, but we did have the plans for that.
Okay. That's, that's great. That, the stages is a perfect example of it ramping up to a point where hospitals are looking at different levels, they're looking at different options. That's a good, you know what I mean, that's a good level as opposed to planes crashing and, and everything else, so. Um, the other question I had is, is that, so when I, when I looked at the numbers, you had said that, and I apologize, um, you had said that we had, I was basically doing the numbers. There's a certain percentage of people that were in the, um, long-term care facilities. And I'm trying to jump to my notes real quick. It looks like there was like 62, um, deaths that were in non-long-term care. Is that, am I roughly right about that?
Yeah, we were at 151 deaths and 89 were related to long-term care.
Okay.
It's over 50% were related to the long-term cares.
Okay. All right, there's that piece. Okay, that's going to explain my death rates. And then, can you do a better job, uh, and I apologize because I was, can you tell me? I love when we're first at something that's good. Can you tell me more about, we are number one in the lowest amount of cases? Can you say that again? Because I think that that might be a really good point to be heard again.
Um, you know, what, what was I talking about there?
You were talking about-
Was I talking about the pediatric? I was talking about the pediatric positivity rate. So when you look at their daily pediatric report, it lists it out by county, how many positive cases, how many total cases, or how many positive negatives and totals tested, and the positivity rate. And they have that every day it comes out. Um, as of yesterday, we were the lowest positivity rate amongst the state. There were 15 counties that actually did more pediatric testing than us. Um, some of them not a whole lot, like 100 or 200 more. Um, and then there, of course, were the big counties that did quite a bit more. Um, but we were the lowest positivity rate of those labs that were done.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. I'm good on the, the questions, and thank you, Ms. Stahl and staff for coming. I really appreciate it. I know you guys are busy. Thank you.
I have just a couple more if you don't mind. I'm sorry. Um, and I, there are things that I've spoken directly with you about, Ms. Stahl, but I just, I want to, want to revisit. And, um, so you and I, I had inquired about the child testing sites. And one of the, um, things that you identified, or we identified together, I guess, was a lack of free testing opportunity in the north end of the county. Um, and I know there are some pediatric groups that are doing some testing. I got some information from, um, a friend of mine that works in one of those pediatric offices, and they've said that they can write prescriptions for them to go to the hospital and get tested if they feel it's necessary. But do you see, and I, I, I don't think that this level of granular data is available to me. I'm wondering if it is for you. The number of children being tested in the north end of the county compared to the number of children being tested in the south end of the county? Do you have access to that data?
I do not have access. We just have a total number tested in our county.
Okay.
Bruce, do you know if there's any available data set? Um, what I can say that, um, since, since we talked, I can say in the north end of the county, I know Omni is looking towards moving to the north end of the county. Um, and they do testing for anybody two and above. Um, I also found out that Medfast, if you're going in just for testing, is not charging, um, an office visit. So you can just go in and get tested.
Okay.
Okay.
And they'll test children as well?
Mm-hmm.
Is there, there's no charge for the test or the office visit at Medfast?
No, I, I, that's what, that's what they've told me, no.
Okay. That's great info. Thank you.
But there's a difference between the rapid test and the regular test that is free. And that's where some of our staff got crossed up. So just to make sure, they need to call ahead.
Yeah, when I say parish is doing testing too, though, really, I want to reiterate. When I say parish, I don't necessarily mean parish hospital.
Right.
I mean their mobile van that's out in the community. Um, and I know they're, and I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but I know at their, um, Health and Fitness Center, they're testing one or two days a week, and they're going out in the community, you know, a couple days a week. So when I say parish, I'm saying it more globally, but it's not the hospital.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. I'm sure they appreciate that as well.
Yeah, all the hospitals.
Yeah.
They don't want people going in for testing.
And do you know on that, um, on the van that's going out, and I think they actually have like five different locations in the north area that they're taking the van to on a regular rotating schedule, do you know if they're actually doing the pediatric testing?
I do not know that.
Okay. Very good. Um, and then one of the other things that we had talked about was contact tracing. Um, and you had indicated that you all are completely caught up on, on contact tracing. You're meeting that 24-hour, um, initial contact with a positive case. Is that correct?
Correct.
So can you, um, can you explain to me how that works? So you contact the person, is the person then asked to notify people they've been in contact with? Are you all actually reaching out? What's the process there?
Okay, so if you're positive, then we call you, and then we, we go from there in concentric circles. Who lives in your household? What are their risk factors? Where have you been? Who you've been with? And then you then reach out to those folks and notify them that they need to self-quarantine.
So I would be the one reaching out to them directly?
Correct.
So, and I, I had a teacher reach out to me with a scenario regarding contact tracing, and she said that she had become aware of, um, a family where the grandparents living in the home had tested positive, and there were two children in the home that were school age. In that situation, would the district be notified that the children are in a home with people who have tested positive? Or would that be up to the parents to notify us?
That's up to the parent.
Okay.
I didn't hear him.
He said it was up to the parents to notify us. So, um-
Because we wouldn't necessarily know even.
That's what I was asking for. We could cross add.
So when you, uh, when you speak with someone who's positive and you have that conversation with them, and they say, "Well, in my home is my son and my daughter-in-law and their two children."
Mm-hmm.
That would, I guess what I'm getting at is, is we're really, we're relying on the honor system, right?
Correct.
Okay. So was there a time, because I've had several people reach out to me and indicate that they had tested positive but had not gotten a call from the Department of Health? Was there a time where we were lagging?
Well, there was, there was delays early on, particularly more in the beginning portion of July just because of the numbers of cases. I mean, we were getting 200, 200 cases a day. So if you can imagine-
Right.
Uh, trying to manage through that, including the weekend, um, it was a challenge. And, and yet we, we've gotten caught up, and now we are, we are reaching out to everybody. Now, again, some people have bad phone numbers, some people don't call you back, some people blow you off. I mean-
Yeah, I can only imagine that would be difficult. And I want to point out that I absolutely understand it's a resource issue as well. You guys are, are doing a great job with a really small team. So I don't, I, I'm not trying to insinuate that things are not being done efficiently. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand the process so that I can understand the risk associated.
And also, also we prioritize those, those cases. So for example, if you're 60 or older, then you're higher on our radar of wanting to reach out to you and make sure you're protected because you may have an elderly spouse or something like that. If you're on the lower end of the spectrum, then you're not as high a priority. We will get to you, but you're just not as high a priority. Um, and we do that. And then you've got the variables of what sort of test did you actually have? Did you have an antigen test? Did you have a PCR test? Had you been to a provider? Had you been to a hospital? Was this a nursing? So there's all these variables that go into how aggressively we pursue you.
Okay. But at this point, we're, we're caught up in-
We are caught up.
Making contact with each and every one of them.
We are caught up.
So, so when you, um, it, when you say that you're making contact with every positive within 24 hours, that doesn't necessarily mean that you've actually spoken with them, right? It means that you've attempted outreach?
Correct.
Okay, so that's probably where some of the confusion is coming from because you have those situations where people don't respond or the, the number's not correct or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing I will add is, you know, when we talk about the rapid testing, which is the antigen testing, the rapid testing, those results don't necessarily come directly to us. Those results get reported onto the state. And the premise there is if you had the antigen point-in-time testing, you've seen a medical provider. That's, that's the only place you can get that done. So, but those states, those, and we do count them as positives, yes, but there is a longer lag time between us even knowing about it. Um, which is why we've talked to, um, to Chris. If a parent says, "My child went in and had the antigen testing and it's positive, please bring that to our attention. Please show that to us so that we can act on it." But there will definitely be a lag time in the antigens getting to us.
And do you have an estimate of how different that lag time is compared to the PCR? Like, you've said that it's roughly five to seven days. Is that inclusive, inclusive of PCR and antigen, or is that?
Well, antigen would be virtually immediate, okay? It's rapid. And that gets faxed to the state. Now, when they actually upload it into our database where we can see it, I, I don't know how long that takes.
Okay. That's what I was after, was how long is it before you all are aware of those, those numbers?
Don't know.
Okay.
So can I just clarify something that, that you asked it? So, because we have, there's a, there, we're talking about a delay and people don't answer phones. That is from you guys having able to communicate and, and talk about contact tracing, but the people are getting their, they're, they're not waiting to get their positive results from you. They're, you know, they can log on-
No, they get their results from the provider at the office.
As soon as they're-
They walk out knowing their results.
Right. For the, but even for the PCR testing, the, you know, they're able to see it as soon as they can log on and, you know-
Right, if they-
Sometimes they're dual, they're dual communication.
Right.
Sometimes the providers are already contacting you.
Right.
Try to let the provider reach out first, but, you know, usually a lot of times they're dual communication. They're, "Oh, I already knew that. My, my doctor called me or whatever."
Right.
And that's cool. That's good.
Right.
Yeah. And I was going to say, and you're right, LabCorp and Quest have your own self-portals that, um, that you can see. You know, the other thing I want to mention on the whole contact tracing, contact tracing has become very visible now during this coronavirus epidemic here, pandemic that we have going on. But contact tracing is not new. Contact tracing is the basic science of epidemiology. So we in epidemiology have done contact tracing since the beginning of time. That's what we do with every disease process. Um, whether it be chickenpox or shigella or meningitis or whatever it happens to be, we do contact tracing. It's just become very visible now as to what contact tracing is, but it's not new.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for our partners at the Department of Health?
I do have a question for them. It's not necessarily related to metrics, but it, it has to do with our relationship with the Department of Health and, and how we're moving forward. So as we've gone through our reopening plan, which you guys were an integral part of, um, and, you know, you've, you've looked at it, you told us last time you were with us that it was a, a good, solid plan. Um, you know, one of the things that we're going to be dealing with is when a student or an employee has a positive result or is a presumptive case because they're living with someone who is, has a positive case, and how we deal with that in the letters that go out. And I, I just had a little bit of a concern and, and, let me explain why I'm concerned, with what happened as a result of our graduations. And so I just want to know how we're going to, I know we're going to work hand-in-hand, but ultimately, those letters that go out come from the Department of Health and not from the school district. So what happened was, we had, we found out that someone attended one of our graduations, um, a couple of our graduations who had a positive result. And a letter was sent out to all of the graduates and to the attendees saying there was a positive case, um, at the graduation, so you all need to quarantine for 14 days. So I have a problem with that, and I just want to know how are we going to do differently from that? Because here's the problem. We couldn't get any, and I, I know we have to protect HIPAA, but I, you know, we couldn't even say it was someone on the field, it was someone in the stands. And I know we're all having abundance of caution, but here's my concern. If I was at a graduation and I, and I knew it was an attendee in, let's say, the west stands, but I knew, I sat on the east stands, and when the graduation was over, I didn't talk to anybody, I went straight to my car, you know, or it was someone on the field, and I didn't interact with anybody on the field. So then we've just put- the field, and I didn't interact with anybody on the field, so then we've just put hundreds of people, and because it was a couple graduations, a couple thousand people potentially in quarantine for 14 days, when the majority, and at an event where we were outdoors in a huge football arena, and people had masks on and they were socially distanced, and so we're about to send people back into schools, and they're gonna, we're gonna be washing our hands, and we're doing social distancing, physical distancing, people have taken issue with the social word, because they want us to still be social, but, and wearing masks and all that stuff, so, I want us to be cautious, but I think I'm, I'm having a little problem with that, because then it's getting out, and the reason why I'm taking issue is then we had, the next week, someone come to a board meeting and say, "We had an outbreak at, at a graduation," and I'm like, "We didn't have an outbreak at graduation." Can you kind of speak to that and how we're gonna move forward with the communication?
Well, what I can say is, no, we can't tell you, we can't tell you who, where, what, when, because that's violation of HIPAA, unfortunately. We do the best we can to identify, I mean, once, once the school day starts, there'll be a much better opportunity, because I think we'll all be in sync of, of what we're talking about. I can say the letters are form letters, but we don't send the letters out, we recommend the letters being sent out, so...
But we don't write the letters?
No, there are letters, but it, it's in conjunction, you know, with district staff in, in actually sending the letters out, and I believe that's gonna be part of what the whole resource team is going to be, correct? Chris? Yes, the response team, and, and recommendations when letters should go out.
Yeah, just a couple of things, there's two different letters, one is a letter related to students, and that's the letter we get from the Department of Health, the other is a letter related to employees, and that's one that we generate here. You know, from the onset, we decided, we made a decision that we were gonna follow CDC and DOH recommendations, it is not for us to second-guess what medical experts are telling us, so when they recommend, we follow suit. Yes, the response team, we, we're working on our finalized plan for what that looks like, if we have to do contact tracing and close a class down, a building down, a, you know, a theater system down, so we should have that ready for, for you guys to look at probably the very beginning of next week, Tuesday, Tuesday-ish. But in terms of those letters, when school is back in session, we will have a much better handle on exactly who our contacts to case is, and we very specifically, even over the summer, as we were doing return-to-activity letters and letters due to just having, you know, employees on campus, we very specifically said, "These letters only go out to the identified contacts to case, those people who are within six feet for longer than 15 minutes for two days up to the, the first onset of symptoms." So, yes, graduation was, we were unable to identify who those people were, but when school starts, our response team and our principals, who are gonna be doing that in-school contact tracing, are gonna have a much better handle and a much more conservative approach to distributing those letters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Susan?
I had two things, one was a follow-up to Ms. Campbell, when I had asked earlier about that, those are protocols that come directly down from the state on how we're supposed to notify people, right? Or is that something that we're developing here in the county? As far as notifying all of the people at the graduation, hey, you know what I mean, there's been a, a person that tested positive, does that come from the, the state, or is that something we develop here, that protocol right there?
That would be a local decision based on, based on guidance that we receive from the state, general guidance from the state, applying, applying to the individual local decision. I can say, in those specific instances, we were not able to identify the close contacts, so the error was in the side of caution, rather than, than the other way.
Sure, no, that's all.
But, but it's general guidance, but then applying to a specific situation was what we would do locally.
Beautiful, and then I, and then the other thing was, I, I took a look at, I pulled up the state, you know, reportings and stuff like that to, to look at the number of cases over the last two weeks, just like you had said before, and this isn't so much a question for you, but I wanted to just kind of do something for my board members. We had specifically talked about how there was a difference between like 4.4% and 8.6%, right? One of the things that drives me crazy about these anomalies is that on 7/27, 1,300 people tested, 88 tested positive at a 6.2%, right? The very next day, only four more people tested positive, but we only tested 900, or only 975 tested posi, were tested, so the number's 8.6%. So, it jumped over two points in one day because less people tested, does that make sense to you? And then if you move down, you go down to 7/31, 2,000 people were tested that day, 98 positives, so now all of a sudden, we're at 4.4%. So, the numbers are moving, even though the, and it's based on, you're, you're consistently getting numbers in certain days that are 88, 92, 80, 86, and they're varying two to four points based on the number of people that are in there. So, when I was talking about going to a, a more, a stable number, which is your, just like Misty was speaking to earlier, Ms. Belfort, about your population per 100,000, it gives us a more of a stable point for our data, that's all. And I, I'm gonna send this to you guys right now as far as...
Well, I think that's why the seven-day rolling average and the 14-day rolling average, because as Ms. Dahl shared with us the last time, that we could, still just don't look at one day, we need to look at our trends, and so if we do the averages, then we're getting the trends.
Yeah, but even in the rolling averages piece, you're, you're, you're still showing up how many people came in seven days as opposed to how many people came the other seven days. There's, in statistics, you always try to look for one common data point that's stable to try to get all of the other data points off of, and it's just a varying number, that's all, I just wanted to kind of, for a lot of the people out there that were saying, "Hey, there's 8.6%, what day was that?" Well, we only tested four more positive people than the day before, which was 6.2%.
Well, I mean, you can take these same numbers and just do numbers of cases divided by the population of the county every day, and, you know...
I did it. Yep, that's all, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Ms. Belfort.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Any more questions for friends at Department of Health? I have one last one, I think, before I let you all relax. The letter that came out from Commissioner Corcoran to Hillsborough County seemed to hint at how we handle situations going forward if we have positivity in our schools. Have you all received any direction that you should be working to avoid school closures in the event of positive cases in our schools?
No.
Okay.
No.
Say that louder.
And I think that, that is all an individual, you know, with, we're talking shutting a whole school system down is totally different than shutting a classroom down or a school down based on something that's going on in that individual school or individual classroom. And we have always worked with the district on an outbreak going on in, in a school, saying, you know, "We need to stop," or "Stop that classroom," and it doesn't happen often, it's gonna happen, it is gonna happen, because I can say, we are gonna have cases. Hopefully, we will not have cases and, and spreading of cases within schools, because I truly feel very confident that the district plan, that the plan that you guys have is excellent to minimize the spread, but all the teachers and all the children are out in the community, I mean, that's the reality here, so I think we are gonna have cases, but no one has ever said, and, and you know, we're not gonna shut down, Dr. Mullins is gonna shut down, we're gonna recommend based on what is going on in the school, and that'll be part of the, of the resource team.
So, you are, you are free to make a recommendation?
Based on, based on a disease process in a school for anything, yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, yes, Ms. Moore?
I was gonna say, it's the, the response team, I know you keep saying the resource team, but it's the response team.
Response team, whatever.
Response to whatever, we did meet, Dr. Thady and I did meet with all, all three of the members from the DOH yesterday, as well as Patty Seibert and Helen, I don't know Helen's last name.
Medlin.
Medlin.
How was Medlin?
To review what that looks like, based on closing classes for three to 10 days, class, whole classes, closing schools for somewhere between three to 10 days with a rolling two-week review, or closing feeder systems, if, if it takes it to that, school or schools. So, we are on board with the same plan, we've reviewed it, I've sent them the, the new draft, the cabinet's looking at the new draft on Monday, and we should be able to roll it out, like I said, to you guys shortly thereafter, but there's, there's no question that it's part of the process, that we look at what's within our scope, and what's within our scope is to respond to the illnesses that we see, and to make recommendations to Dr. Mullins about closing buildings based on that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else have any more questions? Thank you all so much for once again being so freely giving of your time and expertise to guide us through this challenging time. All right, board members, I believe we have two things on our schedule today, one is discussion of where we go from here, if we're going to establish some metrics for us to analyze as a board to make decisions going forward, and then the other being our emergency rules, so did anyone want to weigh in on the establishment of any metrics moving forward and where we go with that?
You know, if we just look at our discussions so far, it seems like we are in the positivity rates or the cases per 100,000, I'm comfortable with either one of those.
Can you talk just a little bit louder, Ms. Duskevich?
Can you not hear me?
I can though.
Can you, that close?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just saying that we, it seems like we've kind of honed in on positivity rate over a two-week period of trend, and maybe the cases per 100,000, and I'm comfortable with both of those, us, us taking a look at them. When we look at other states and other counties and our governor's recommendation, and even maybe what Miami-Dade is doing, I'm comfortable with that below 10, definitely five is, is what the American Pediatrics Association, that's where I think we need to be, but if we're trending down, which we have been the last two weeks, maybe we periodically meet and, or we get a notification from you all if it looks like we're trending up, and then we meet and reevaluate, if we have a two-week trend up, obviously, something's gonna have to change, but from what I'm looking at right now with the two-week trend down, I think we're where we need to be, thanks.
Anyone else? Ms. McDougal?
I agree with Ms. Duskevich, I think five is where we'd like to be, and we are trending down, 10 seems like a very high number to me, and nowhere does any medical professional recommend 10, our governor does. But my bigger question to us is, if we set a metrics, what are we willing to do with that? So, where do we go if we set a metrics and it goes above? So, as a board, where are we going?
If I may, in, in my opinion, I think that, that metric is probably around 10, because like you said, that, in, in all cases, that's high, I'm not willing today to say hard and fast, we hit eight, or we hit 10 and we're, we're done, but I say, we, we have an emergency meeting, and we sit down and we take a look, and we bring them back in, and we evaluate where we're at, why the numbers are reaching that high over a two-week period, and I don't, I don't think we can make, everything's so different from day to day, so I feel like, you know, maybe that triggers an emergency meeting for us.
Mr. Susan?
So, when I look at this, I, and the reason I was asking the questions with the hospital beds, the planned to population, and I was running the numbers, from one week to the next, it varies almost 1,500 tests over the last three weeks. So, when we talk about putting a metrics together based upon the tests, it drives me crazy, like I, I know that this is a theme that I keep doing, but I, I can't, I can't look at a statistic where we're looking at the number of people that came in to test as opposed to the number of positivities to give a point. What I would rather do is see it come back down, even if it's a really, really small number, and do it towards a population, whether that's to 100,000 or to 591,000, which is what we were, our last one that we had. So, that number, I would rather see in there, than, and there's some statistics from Germany and some of the other European countries that went to that model, and they use a certain numbers, .005 and stuff like that, so that's, that is a standard that's being used in other places successfully. The other thing I would say is, for me, before we just say, "Oh, it's, it's there," we should be looking at also the other metrics, which are the death rates, also the hospital beds and percentages in the ICU, and I love the idea of the red, orange, yellow, green per day based upon these, but here's where I come from, is that if the death rates are, are going up, if our trends are going up, if our positive to the population is going up, there's that piece where they were talking about we would move from phase one to phase two to phase three medically, right? I truly believe that before we decide to, okay, it hit 10%, we're having a meeting, and we're gonna close schools or not close schools, I think that we need to form a mini group of the DOH, some of the hospital groups, and so when that decision is coming down, we are able to ask them, hospitals, "Do you guys have conversion to beds, right? Are these death rates to the long-term care facilities, or are they our ages that we're in?" And, and I think, so I think that there's a metrics there, so when you asked me to, that's the reason I couldn't get there last week, was I would put together a metrics of death rates, hospital beds and ICU, and positive to population, and then I would base that as a certain metrics, which I've done all the numbers over the last two weeks, come up with some ideas, but then at the end of that, we then would have the meeting with the local officials to make sure that we're moving forward in the right. And philosophically, we have a question to ask ourselves, are we going to close schools because of the effect that it has on the community, or are we gonna close schools because of the effect it's having on our students? And I think that's another piece that we should be talking about too, because we may find that a lot of our 50 to 70 to 80-year-old individuals in the county are the ones testing positive and that it's moving up, and the trend rate for our median age is moving up, but in the same case, our students are not the ones that are getting sick, and the students aren't the ones that are, that are carrying it, so in that case, we philosophically have to ask ourselves, are we part of a whole of the community, and we shut down based upon the community spread that we may be creating inside the schools, or are we about keeping our schools open and continuing to go through? So, that, when you asked me about what I looked at, that's where I was at, and I can provide numbers, but I, I don't know if we need to be there, and I thought the board would also have some, some interjections on that, that's all. So, that was my plan, was to death rates, hospital beds and ICUs, positive to population, and then have a meeting with the appropriate officials to talk about it prior to doing it. And the other thing I was gonna ask Mr. Gibbs, in 1991, I played football for Jupiter High School, and we were forced by the Department of Health to go play on the weekends, and the reason was, is because the mosquitoes were, were carrying encephalitis, and we were forced to play our games on Saturday. It stunk, I hated playing it, right? But when I looked back at the way the DOH did that, the DOH from the state level was giving directives to the schools, setting prior precedent from the 90s as to the direction of what their role was with the Department of Education. So, my question to you is, can we look at that holistically and see if there is prior precedence during the encephalitis outbreak back in the 90s, or if you already have?
Prior precedence for what, the DOH?
Yeah.
Making that call?
Yeah, and, and rulemaking authority in government, we all know that you depend on what has done prior as far as rules and regulations, whether that's your jurisdiction and it's, you know, the, what they've done in the past, and had rulemaking authority to do so in the past governs what they can do in the future. So, if they had given directive from the DOH at the state level to shut down schools to play sports and to not have any activities after hours and to do all those things, that sets prior precedent to allow them to do the same now, does that make sense?
Yeah, I get where you're going.
That's all.
They have statutory authority to say certain kids can't attend school, so if you have a chickenpox outbreak and you have kids who haven't been vaccinated or have never had it, they can say those kids who are susceptible cannot attend until it's under control, that's in statute.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Ms. Campbell, did you wanna weigh in?
Well, I would just, you know, my, my question is the same as it was a couple weeks when we talked about this subject, which is, to what end? We're gonna establish a metric to shut, I mean, I'm assuming to shut the whole entire district down, but you know, Mr. Susan brings up a very important point, which is, our numbers overall as a county could start to go up, I mean, if, we have a couple of, we, we have a large older population in our county, and we have a couple of long-term care facilities, which we have a lot of those as well, a couple of outbreaks at a long-term care facility, and our numbers would go up, but it wouldn't... but it wouldn't necessarily be affecting our day-to-day operations and our schools and our, our school families and our staff. So, which makes it difficult to just tie it to that. But I would just say, you know, one of the things that I have started to look at is our other, you know, our other counties around the state. And so, just, and just to see what the ramifications are. If you want to look, you know, Hillsboro has been in the news because of what they were doing last week in the response by the, the Commissioner of Education and by the governor. Hillsboro is close to 10 in their rolling average. And I'm sorry, I just kept, I just started looking at the other counties a couple of days ago as far as I was looking at them but following their trends. I just think that we, yeah, I just hate to repeat everything that I said a couple of weeks ago, but I just, you know, we're, when we have... I'm trying to put my thoughts together, sorry. It's going to be such an impact, you know, and I, the point was made in the last couple of days that even, and I, I can't verify this because I haven't looked at this myself, but that even Miami-Dade is looking at their students that they absolutely can't meet their needs in any other ways and they're going to be having those students on campus in person. And I'm assuming that's the, maybe the, what's the word I'm looking for? Not underserved, self-contained classrooms. Are you, are you, Dr. Mullins, have you heard the same? I mean, I know they're starting to plan, they're taking their whole campus online through a certain time, but that they even have some students that they're saying their campuses will be opened. Does that sound familiar?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. So, so even Miami-Dade, who is the worst of the worst in you can, in our state as far as numbers and every metric. They realize that there are some students that they can't serve except for brick and mortar. And, you know, when the, I read through the letter that Commissioner Corcoran put out last Friday and one of the things he said was, "Okay, you want to do that and very, you know, alter your plan, then we're going to have to submit a separate plan and we're going to have to be willing to, to go and give the reasons why, school by school, if we're going to say, you know, and what we're going to do to meet those needs." And we just have to realize, I do, I will reiterate this and repeat this again. If we go all virtual, we are not going to serve our students well, not all of them. We're going to serve the students well whose families can support them. And even with a device, even if we give them a device and even if we give them a hotspot, we're just not going to be doing it well. And I just think we need to have some, some pretty good reasons not to do that. And I, I'd like to talk about, because I, some people have said, "Oh, you're just looking at your bottom line." And let's just talk about the funding issue for just a minute. It's not about the district's bottom line. I think people need to realize that, why the funding is different. And we haven't, I don't know that we've delved into this really specifically, so can we just talk about a little bit? Because the, at the roundtable yesterday, the commissioner and the governor talked about this a little bit more. When the funding is different, this is just for people who may be listening, I know we all know this. Funding is different for virtual schools. You, you don't get the same, you don't get a transportation categorical because obviously if you're taking school virtually, then you don't need transportation. And you also don't get the class size amendment funding, which is, because virtual classes, teachers can have a much larger class, larger class load. And I don't know what the limit is, Dr. Sullivan, if you know, for virtual classes, if there, if there is a top end for how many students that they can have at a time. You know what that is? But it's not limited because they don't have that one-on-one, they don't have one-on-one interaction with the students except for when they have to give them a test. And so, so that is a significant amount of money. But again, it's not bottom line. But if, if, if we decide to go all virtual, and this is what Hillsboro was told, if you decide to go all virtual, you can, you can make that decision. You are going to not have the full funding. You're going to have your full regular FTE funding, but not your full categorical funding because why do you need transportation funding if you're not transporting kids? Which is, so they either have to make the decision, "Do we continue to pay bus drivers even though they're not doing anything and we don't have the money for it?" Or, "We're going to be letting go of people." Same thing with class size. If they don't get the class size dollars because they're teaching everybody virtually, are they going to continue to keep all those employees on when they don't have the funding to do it? Or are they going to let go of teachers and go to the whole entire district under virtual model? That's not about our bottom line. That's about, about having to let go of people. And I don't want to, I don't send that, I don't want to send shockwaves of fear through this, but that's just reality. That is what that funding is for. And if we're going to teach in a virtual model, then we're going to get funded in a virtual model. So, again, we just, something, you know, everybody, I, I, I don't know. That's, that's what I have to say about that. I'll stop.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Madam Chair, if I may just add for the further clarification of Brevard Virtual School, in addition to reduce funding, there is an additional cost to the district to pay the, I'll call it a subscription fee for the curriculum for students in Brevard Virtual School. So, there's a cost on top of the reduced FTE funding as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Belford, can I say one other thing?
Sure.
So, the other piece that I had to those metrics was to keep an eye that geographically, we may be able to work with inside of what we're trying to do. Because I know Titusville may do a great job up there and Parrish may be doing great jobs and maybe another area in the county may not. So, and I think I heard Ms. Moore talking about, you know what I mean, feeder chains and stuff like that. So, I think that plays into it. And, you know, there's a, another piece that we, we haven't really looked at is the economics and cost of what our health insurance would be doing if all of our people started to incur positive tests and end up in the hospital. Because there becomes a point of no return on our health insurance because we're self-insured. That if we start seeing that a lot of our employees who are dealing with a lot of the children that are coming in are testing positive and they start ending up in ICUs, the cost of our health insurance plan is already at a bare minimum in where we're at. So, if we start incurring costs there, that's another factor to take a look at for our schools too. That's all. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. So, first, I'm going to kind of work backwards from some of the stuff that's been said. I think one thing that, that our public also misses with regard to the directives from the state and what, what we're being told to do is that currently our e-learning model is not supported by statute. And so, that's one of the flexibilities that comes with the emergency order. So, in reality, if we were to opt to go all e-learning and BBS, the e-learning doesn't qualify us for funding and doesn't qualify us for seat time and doesn't qualify for any of that. So, I think that has to be a necessary consideration as well. That the, you know, that opportunity would go away for our families. And while BBS does a great job, that doesn't necessarily work for all students. And I think that's an important point that we have to keep in mind, is we have to serve all of our students. To your point, Ms. Campbell, I'm not even suggesting that we go 100% online necessarily because I do think that there are some students that need to be served in a face-to-face environment. Unfortunately, our governor and our Commissioner of Education put down an edict that we must do face-to-face five days a week, full-time for all students. And in doing that, they took away options that we could have easily addressed the social-emotional concerns, the food insecurity concerns, the delivery of service concerns, the mental health concerns with a part-time face-to-face and a part-time online. A hybrid model, if that's, you know, many, many states are doing that to address those issues. We don't even have that option under the emergency order that came down. And I struggle, quite frankly, I struggle with the discussion of 10% because that's a random number that our governor pulled out of the sky. Not a single medical professional that I have spoken with has suggested that 10% positivity rate is safe for our kids to return to school. And the reason for that is that it doesn't matter if we do 100% spectacular job within our schools of everyone being masked appropriately, of everyone socially distancing appropriately, of phenomenal ventilation in our classrooms. What's going on in our community is going to impact our schools more than anything else. If you talk to the CEOs of the hospitals, they'll tell you, their people are not testing positive from exposure in the hospital. Their people are testing positive from exposure in the community, from groups of staff members who are going out after work and having dinner or going to the bar or hanging out at someone's house, going to a barbecue on the weekend. That's why the community transmission number is so incredibly important to our ability to open schools successfully. And I will go back to what I said last week or last time we met. And that is, if we truly, truly believe that schools are important to our families and our students, then it is our paramount job to ensure that we open them as safely as we possibly can, so that our students have continuity, so that they can rely on a schedule of going to school. Because quite frankly, if our teachers all test positive and we have to shut down schools, we're not doing them any favors. And that's what frustrates me about the edict coming down from the state because our governor has randomly set a 10% number. And when the Health Department said earlier this morning that the CDC has not said 5%, they have. The director of the CDC said anyone in a hotspot should not consider opening schools and then later defined that a hotspot is anyone over 5%. And then I hear from the Department of Health that, "Well, our positivity rate is probably 5% to 10% greater than what we're actually seeing in the numbers." And granted, that's statewide, that's nationwide, that's everywhere just because we're not testing everyone. But I want you guys to think for a minute about that impact on our schools. If we have a 5% positivity rate and we have a school of 1,000 people, each and every day, five people are walking into that school COVID-positive. And don't get me wrong, I think our team has done a phenomenal job of putting together a plan to address and mitigate and create the safest environment they possibly can. But I go back to what I said before, it's what's going on in our community. It doesn't matter how well we do it in our schools. And the fact that our governor has said 10% and then silenced our local health officials to give us recommendations, which I'm furious about, just doesn't make sense to me. He's, he's not, I don't know where he found a medical expert to tell him 10% because I can tell you guys, I've spoken with epidemiologists, infectious disease specialists, you name it, all over the country, people who are not under the thumb of the governor. And every single one of them has said, "Anything over 5% is really dangerous for you guys to open schools." And I know we talk about kids not getting infected and we can argue all day long about, you know, whether kids are susceptible, how sick they get when they get it. But we can't run schools without teachers. And our teachers are susceptible. And our students, who are adolescents, are susceptible to share that with our teachers. And so, I just really feel like we owe it to our community to stand up and say, "You know what? I'm sorry. At least let's try and say, 'Let us serve our most vulnerable students who truly need to be served face-to-face, but let us do something that allows us to decrease our class sizes so we have a greater chance.' And let us not throw 80,000 people back into a face-to-face situation when we're experiencing high community spread levels." And I get we need to look at trends and not individual days, but you cannot tell me that our trend over the past seven to 14 days isn't impacted by the close down of the testing sites. There's obvious huge fluctuations in those numbers. So, our current trend, I have zero faith in. In addition to that, we've got the double counting of, of the negative tests. And that's not happening in other states. It's happening in Florida. And there's no way for us to say what the impact of that is. So, for us to say 10% when, well, it probably is 5 or 10% higher than the actual 10% that's being recorded because we're not testing everyone. "Oh, and then we're also double counting all of the negative tests, which is driving our positivity rate down." It's just infuriating to me. And I don't know that we have options and it may not work and the governor and the commissioner may say we are not willing to work with you on this issue and give you any flexibility. But I feel like we owe it to our community to stick with the medical advice and say, "Look, all of these medical experts have said we are putting people at risk by opening if we are over 5% in our community." And I get it if everyone's not willing to go that direction, but I feel like we are being bullied by the state based on, quite frankly, a focus on economy. If the governor and the commissioner were, were truly, truly concerned about our ability to serve students effectively, they would have given us an option that allowed us to get our class sizes smaller. They would have given us an option for part-time, face-to-face and online learning. But they didn't. They mandated five days a week, full-time. And why did they do that? Because their focus is on the economy. Because they want parents to get back to work. And quite frankly, that offends me. Not because I don't want to serve our families, not because I, it's not important for people to be working. But our teachers are professionals. Our staff members are professionals. And we're going to focus on economy over health and safety of an entire community? I just, I really struggle with it. I'm sorry. It's, I'm incensed with what's going on at the state level at this point in time.
Ms. Belford?
Yes.
I, I hear you and I hear your concerns. And I am also concerned with our, with our, I, I care about our staff and I care about our students. And, you know, regardless of what I say here, that will be questioned, it's already been questioned. But I want to, I just, with a couple of things that you said, we need to be accurate. And so, we need to be accurate. We talk about double counting of negative tests. Let's just be real specific in what that is. When someone, like, if I'm worried that I might have COVID, I could go get a test today. Next week, I could be worried about getting COVID again and I could go get tests. You're calling that a double negative, but the truth is, it's two different situations. I could be access here, access here. It's, what she did say though, that they're not counting negatives when someone has been positive, right? And then their, their employer has said, "Go get tested two more times and as soon as you're negative, you can come back to work." Which I think that guidance has changed that, but some employers still have that. Those aren't, those aren't being counted. It's one per case. So, just need to be careful about how we say that because that's not necessarily accurate. But someone could be tested multiple times, have been tested since March because they're concerned or because they're a long-term care facility and they have to test every two weeks. Those get counted every time. I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with that. The other thing is, you know, people want to talk about the science, but we need to be real specific about the math. When we say a 5% positivity rate, you can't take that because, and I say that not because, just you said something a little while ago, because I get emails and I see it out on social media and everything. They multiply that percentage times our entire student-employee population. You just can't do that. Because if you want to do that, it's less than 1% positive. Because that number is the positivity rate of the people who came to be tested and the majority of people come to be tested have, some of it is because they, they work that way or they're just worried. But most of them have had an exposure or they have symptoms and they think they might have it. So, I, I hear what you're saying about it might be larger in the population, but this is, this is where we are. We have the numbers, we have the hospital rates, we have the death rates, we have the things that we have with it as it is, with the numbers being reported as they are. So, I just, you know, and, and I hear saying about the economy, but I, I'm not one of those people that when people start talking about the economy goes, "Oh, you're just a bunch of greedy money-grubbers." That affects the health and wellness of our families. People going back to work, people going back to school. It, that absolutely, economy is not just about money for the state. Economy is about the well-being of our citizenry. And so, I just, you know, I, I hear you and I know that you're upset about this. And I, you know, I don't necessarily like the decisions, sometimes it feels like being taken out of our hands. But the truth is, you know, when we talk about, we can't really know what we would have done as a district if we hadn't had those restrictions as far as going staggered, you know, a couple of days here because it wasn't presented to us. So, we don't really know how the board would feel about that as it, as it is. I personally don't think that model meets the needs of our families and would still have liked our families to have a choice because some of our families, some of our kids, they still need to be there every day.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. And I agree that the, the specifics on the math are important. And they are, they are not in fact double negatives. But one of the things that I think is important to look at is the number. For example, when I, I asked, I was, I was driving in and asked the question about the nursing homes. One of the, the long-term care facilities in Titusville is testing their employees every two days. So, when you look at the number of long-term care facilities that we have in Brevard County and the frequency with which they're testing, not to mention, I know people that, that work with children that are going and getting tested once a week just to make sure that they're negative because they don't want to expose anyone. So, that's where my concern comes with us counting all of the negatives. So that's where my concern comes with us counting all of the negatives. Because I do think, and, you know, I can send you information later from an epidemiologist out of University of South Florida who studied the data extensively, who says, yes, there's an impact. I can't nail down the impact, because the state doesn't give me granular enough data to tell you exactly what it is, but there is absolutely an impact. So thank you for that clarification. I just want to clarify, I'm not saying anyone concerned about the economy is greedy money grabbers either, and I do believe that the economy is important. My husband is a small business owner, my small business has been wiped out this year. But I think it's also important for us to consider that many of the students who truly need to be in school for closing achievement gaps, for meeting some of those social emotional needs, for food insecurity, many of those students are also many of our most at-risk students for exposure and more severe illness with regard to COVID. And many of our students are coming from families who are at greater risk from COVID as well, for our at-risk students. So there's a lot of data out there about demographics, and absolutely, I agree, we need to get people back to work, and I want to serve our students as best as possible. And maybe the staggered model's not it, maybe it's only bringing in our most needy children to a face-to-face environment. My point is, we don't have the flexibility to do any of that. But what I do know is, if we can't get our class sizes down, and we can't get our community spread down, many of those same students that we are so eager to serve and ensure that we are addressing every need that they have if we can, they're coming from families who are going to be hit the hardest by exposure. They're coming from families where, if you or I test positive and we have to quarantine for 14 days, we might be okay. But if lower-income family members test positive and can't work for two weeks, they might be out of luck, they might be out of a job, just because of the nature of the jobs that they tend to work. And so admittedly, there is no easy answer here, I don't think there's necessarily a right answer. My concern is rushing in when all of the medical experts have said, one of the most crucial elements of safe reopening of schools is community transmission rate, and our governor has decided that he's going to establish a random rate that is not in line with any of the medical professionals, is incredibly concerning to me.
Thank you, ladies. I just, I don't want to contradict, but I do have a question, because I'm looking at one of the spreadsheets that was sent to us about the stats of other states. And so the governor, yes, has selected 10% positivity or less, but it looks like other states have picked numbers too, and I'm just wondering where that's coming from. So California has picked below 8%, Delaware 10%, one state on here had 20, Iowa 20%. So the only thing, 20%, that's mind-blowing if we're really focused in on 5%. So I don't have the answer to that, but if anyone here does, or has looked into that, or knows of what medical authority has given them guidance in those numbers, because it looks like the states that are setting guidelines have set numbers, and some of them, they're so random and so different. I'm just curious where that came from.
And I don't have the answer to that. I can tell, I mean, I can run through the list of people that I've spoken with that have said that 5% and downward trend over 14 days is critically important, and I think I gave it to you guys on the spreadsheet before, the director of the CDC, Dr. Fauci, the surgeon general for the United States, the Florida Academy of Pediatrics, spoke with the CEO of Parish Health Center, spoke with the infectious disease specialists out of Nemours, you know, it's, I don't know where their numbers are coming from, but I'm, so just to clarify, when I'm speaking with these people, I'm not saying, here's the number, what do you think of it? I'm saying, what is your threshold? What is your recommendation? And literally, I have not had anyone I spoke with that said 10% or 20% is appropriate for opening schools. Not to mention, as Mr. Susan mentioned, we see the per 100,000 rates in other countries that have successfully opened, and that's, you know, that's pretty significant. We are at 11 per 100,000 this week, I believe yesterday is when I looked at the number for us, per 100,000. And the other countries that opened were less than 1 per 100,000 new cases per day, with the exception of Denmark, which was 3.5 per 100,000 per day at the time of reopening. So I just, I don't see how you give a directive without solid medical advice behind that directive that you're giving to an entire state. So, that's where I'm at. Anyone else want to weigh in? Anyone? Mr. Susan, I think you're right, as far as putting together a group of people for going forward to be able to weigh in on that, and I don't know if you want to discuss how we put that together, but I think we definitely happy to hear that the Department of Health has not been told that they cannot give a recommendation going forward on individual school closures, but I think, you know, getting the voice of our local medical experts is important as well.
And there's some other stuff that's coming six months from now, four months from now, when we decide that, when there's a vaccine that's available, and half of our people say, we don't want to take the vaccine, and all of a sudden, this continues to go down the road, you know what I mean? So there needs to be another conversation around the backend of not vaccinating versus anti-vaccinating, I don't want to get into that mud, but how long is this going to go? And what is the plan, right? Because the indicators from the community is, is that there's, it's 50/50 split on, even if the vaccination comes out, that they're actually even going to go do it. So if that's the case, and this numbers are going to continue to go down, like, go like it is, then we just need also a long-term. And that's why I think that putting together a community team, along with metrics that we can look at, I think is a good thing. And that gives everybody the idea and moves forward. I do, I think so. Thank you.
Ms. McDougal, did you want to weigh in, or you?
No, I think a team makes perfect sense, and I certainly agree with you, the 10% number that's been picked out of the sky by our governor is ridiculous, because there are no medical officials that have come anywhere near that number. And our governor, I don't believe is a medical official. So I agree that I think Mr. Susan's idea of putting together a group to, let's reevaluate, let's look at it. I do feel, you know, our teens in our high school transmit just like adults, and that puts our staff and other teens at risk. And you're right, Ms. Belford, when you say, when they're in our building, we can control it, but when they leave our building, we don't know where they're going. I don't know if any of you have gotten emails from your constituents about some of our staff, and where they're going, and how horrible this is, and what are you going to do about it, because they're pottering, and they're drinking, and all sorts of things. We can't control what people do outside our buildings, but how do we protect our staff? And how do we protect other children? And as we've always said, it's not if it's going to happen, it's when it's going to happen. I think we would be all deluding ourselves if we think it's not going to happen, because it will happen, that we will be closing a classroom, or let's hope not a whole school, but I can do see that there will be classrooms that will have to be closed.
All right, so, sounds, are you all on board, Ms. Duskevich and Ms. Campbell, with moving forward on identifying some folks from our local medical community that could come together to help us work through some of our future challenges and decisions?
I think it's a great idea.
Dr. Mullins, are you opposed to, I don't want to step on the feet of our team, but...
No, we'll work on that and confer with both you and Mr. Susan, make sure we have the right representatives.
Board members, would you be most comfortable with recommending, each recommending a person, as opposed to, how do you want to, I don't want to silence anyone's voice, is my concern.
Can I speak, since it was my motion? I would say, you know, we have our people, right? But I think that the main people that need to be in that room are the heads of the hospitals, maybe our local pediatrician leaders, right? I think that we need to have some of the, there needs to be the healthcare individuals inside that room to make those educated decisions. So I always know that we always try to put one person in there, that's okay with me, but I would really like to have the heads of the hospitals, because when I call a lot of people over at Health First and some of the other areas, they say, hey, we can do this, right? So they're not the type that everybody's going to fear, like, you're going to put the hospitals on there, man, they're just going to shut it down. No, that's not the case, actually. So I think that educated background as to their ICU beds, and, you know, somebody in there as far as the, anyways, I can, that's where my mind was, not that we just pick one person each and then have them just have it out in a room, you know what I mean? That there's an educated influx of, we're having deaths in our long-term care, our ICU beds are up, you know what I mean? This is flux, we need to discuss this. That's where I was going at with it. So, that's all.
Along with our Department of Health?
Yeah, sorry, those guys too.
So are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So any consensus, direction on, do we want to establish some specific metrics to look at, and reach out to the state with a request for flexibility based on our infection rate? Are you guys, you want to coast and revisit and see where our numbers go? What's the desire?
I think the state has spoken.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Not forcing anyone.
No, 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 I just, I get, I'm very frustrated. You know what? We can always try, but I agree with Ms. Campbell, the state has made it pretty clear to Hillsborough, who's in a much worse shape than we are. But I am not opposed to, I'm not opposed to it at all.
I, you know, for me, we have a two-week downward trend right now, so I think that's the one thing our Health Department has made clear. I know you're, you know, frustrated with the numbers. What days were we closed? Anybody?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday.
Okay, so we're a little over a week out.
We were trending down into the 4% area before.
Before that. So with the two-week downward trend, I think that we don't have a very strong argument to the state. My biggest concern has always been class sizes. Like, I feel like if we could get everybody six feet apart, then I'm super comfortable, especially with our downward trend. But the only way to do that would be to rotate days or something of that nature, and it's not in the system right now. And with our numbers the lowest, or our rates lowest in the state, I mean, the stuff that she was just saying, the state is going to look at us and laugh us out of the conversation. Like Ms. McDougal just said, Hillsborough's in much worse shape than we are, so I'm comfortable moving forward.
Mr. Susan, not putting you on the spot, but giving you the opportunity to speak if you'd like.
No, not at all. I looked at Hillsborough's numbers, and they're in the elevens and nines percents right now, and they're concerned, right? But if you take the total number that they're testing, cross it to us, and say, okay, well, we're testing 1,500, they're testing 3,500, right? They're 1.4 million people, we're 591,000 people, and you start running the data, you know, I hate this metric, this percentage, because you start to find anomalies where, you know what I mean? They may be just like us, it's just that they're testing more people, and they have more people in their communities, and that they have higher urban centers, which may cause for more people to be able to be available for the tests. We may have people that are in rural areas that aren't coming forward with the tests, they're just staying home. There's so many anomalies with that. Where I find is, is that if you would like metrics, I'm sticking to my death rates, hospital beds, positive to population type thing, and I can give those to you if I can work out some of these numbers by the end of the day. But right now, I'm trying to go back to our highest peak, and then pull those numbers, and then look at what we have here for the cause for concern. So that's where I'm at. I'm okay with establishing metrics, I'm okay with saying we're going to do this, because I think we need to defend our people. You know, this is what our number-one job, you look at your statutes, you as a school board member have the right and have the ability, and it is your number-one job for the health and well-being of our students. And if there's ever a time, then this is this. But I think that we need to put together some solid stuff, you know what I mean? And that's where this is at. I can't do it off of that, I can't do it off of that.
So...
I can give you those metrics at the end of the day, but it's not going to be anywhere near you guys saying 5, 8%, because I'm just going to say no to that. I apologize, but that's just where I'm at. Where I'm at is, I want to look at all of the data, and all the pieces, and say, okay, Houston, we have a problem, but it's not going to be based on 100 people showing up and 50 people showing up for a week, and it just drives me nuts.
Okay. So I think that moves us on to our emergency board.
Ms. Belford, if I may, before you move on to the face covering, if that's the direction you're moving, if I may, just request additional direction from the board on what I'm calling, and please feel free to clarify, the Community Health Leader Collaborative, timeline, objective of that group, and then the conferring with the board, and what's the vision of the format? Is it a work session environment, workshop, that type of thing? Just mostly timeline, objective, and format, just so I clearly communicate to our community health representatives what we're coming together.
When I saw it originally, I saw it as the group that would make the decisions on whether we are going to close or stay open, or move to e-learning, or whatever that was. It was kind of that last barrier of, we have all of these metrics that have come in now, there's definitely a problem, let's go discuss in a roundtable, right? With the medical experts inside the community, let's not let the school district, who we're not medical experts, make those decisions. Let's talk to the people that are there. Now, if you would like to call them together to have a discussion over all of these numbers, and figure out these metrics that are there, we can do that too, because I think the hospitals would tell you that they're very comfortable with where we're at right now, but I don't want to speak for them, so that may be part of the conversation. And that may be, that's up to you guys. But I was using them as a last-minute, we need to talk to the health officials before we do something. That's all. Does that help?
I don't think that helped him.
I just want to make sure that's the consensus of the board.
Yeah, I was just saying what I was...
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Susan, but they're going to give us the same data that we were already presented this morning. I mean, the Department of Health can give us our, so then it's going to come down to their perspective, their opinions, you know, I mean, it would be, if it makes the board feel more comfortable to have it not just coming from one data point, I'm fine with that, and I've already said I'm willing to have the group. To me, you know, then, after we've been, we need to figure out, how long after we've started school do we want them to take a look at how we're going? How often, ever after that? I mean, it's a time commitment, but I think our community leaders will be willing to do that. So is monthly often enough, or too much to ask of them? You know, every two weeks, three weeks, for them to gather and take a look? I don't necessarily, do we need, are you asking, do you, you know, do we be, do you want us to be part of that conversation, or them to meet together, get together, and then report back to us? Kind of a consensus of what's going on in the community?
I would personally suggest that, I mean, I would like to have an initial conversation with them and share with them some of our questions around metrics, what's most important to look at, that sort of thing. So perhaps an initial workshop with the board, and then we can decide from there. I hate to pull them, because I know they are busy people too, and obviously dealing with this pandemic, so I hate to pull them on a regular basis, just for the sake of pulling them, but, you know, if they would be willing to have some initial conversation and then be an available resource as we move forward.
That makes sense to me.
Great, that helps, thank you.
And I would, and Ms. Campbell, the reason, and I agree with you, we can look at the data, the issue that I was having was, and the reason is that those hospitals are in flux of two things, they're increasing and decreasing their ICU beds, and they're also possibly taking on people from outside of our county, based upon the flux. Like Stewart Health has multiple hospitals outside of our county, so they may be sending people from other counties to us at that time, we don't know. So that was the main reason. And just when I was talking, my uncle works for the Cleveland Clinic, and he's one of the directors, and I talked to him about this, and he said that there's a lot of anomalies we can't see as school board members, that we may need health officials to fill us in on. So that was the main reason. But I do agree with you 100% that the data that's out there, we can definitely look at, so thank you.
But to know the why's behind the data, that's important, too.
So just to clarify, I'll work with staff to identify representatives, reach out to board members, make sure that we're getting the, you know, the appropriate representatives. The next format will be a work session kind of environment, dialogue like we've had today, timeline, I would suggest, you know... Timeline, I, I would suggest, uh, you know, we can work on a two-week timeline. I don't know that the layers of officials, particularly if we're talking about, you know, hospital CEOs, if they're gonna be available within the next two weeks. But, uh, I would, I would guess within the next two to four weeks. I'll work to, to, uh, develop that and get that, uh, pulled together. And the objective will be at the first work session to talk through questions, what data is looking like at that point, and then look for their professional, uh, contribution to the considerations for the board as we move forward. Did I capture that correctly?
I think so, yes, thank you. Okay, uh, we are moving on to our emergency rule policy. Uh, we are voting on this this evening during the school board meeting, but we wanted to have an opportunity to have some discussion, answer any questions, address any concerns with the policy that's been drafted. Anyone have questions, concerns, comments?
Of course, me.
Yes. Ms. McDougal.
So I, um, I certainly, I just don't like highly recommended. I just don't like that for our K, I think it's K to second. Because what you're hearing, um, again, from medical officials, is that anybody under two should not be wearing, shouldn't be required to wear a mask. But anybody over that age, unless there's medical conditions or if there is some really, um, extenuating circumstances, that they all should be able to wear a mask. And I'm just highly recommended, just, I, I'm concerned. And I don't know how all of our teachers feel. But I have had some of our staff reach out to me and say, what about me? I'm, and quite frankly, you all have been into a kindergarten through second grade classroom. How many of them hugged you? How many have come up and grabbed your knee? How many, um, are in pods together? So social distancing with those kids? Physical distancing, that is going to be a challenge. So that's just my two cents about that wording. I, I just don't like it, but my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Anyone else?
So we received, um, a copy of a letter. I hope you guys read it, cause it was a fantastic letter, um, put out by the pediatric infectious disease specialists or physicians from the Orlando area, which actually incorporates, it was Arnold Palmer, um, Advent Health, and I'll never say this right, but Neemers, Niemors, however you wanna say that. Put out a letter, a joint letter. And, um, one of the doctors, Dr. Alexander, um, from Neemers, actually has, he did, um, I think you sent it to us and so did, uh, the Neemers lady sent it to us, also did a training for school nurses last week, or the week before, I think, now, for our school nurses. And it was, it was, he broke down the science of the disease and the risk factors. But I hope that you guys will read the letter because he addressed lots of things, the concern about our staff and talking about our kids doing well. But he, he talked about the, 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 uh, what's the word I'm looking for? That the likelihood of students transferring to an adult, right? He actually, he went in specific into the, the training with the nurses to say that the most dangerous place on a school campus is going to be the teacher's lounge. Because you'll have adults with masks off. And so I, certainly, I know all our staff are, are busy doing school things today, but I hope they'll listen to that. You need, that they need to protect themselves. And also their risk of when they're outside in the community, which Ms. Belford just mentioned a while ago. But when they talk about masks in, in the letter, um, they did say, um, "As healthcare providers, we appreciate that not all children are capable of wearing masks consistently. Young children will take out their mask and children with sensory processing disorders such as autism may find masks intolerable. Nonetheless, these children are exceptions. Most children, kindergarten age and older, can and should be taught to wear masks successfully." But I think that's where our language of strongly recommended is appropriate, in my opinion, because that's something that can be taught. So when we say strongly recommended, doesn't mean that our staff is not coming up with, because I've already seen, um, the videos are in the works of here's how we take care of one another. We're gonna be, we're gonna be training and teaching. But, um, I think we, you know, for those younger students, and we've also talked about the whole touching of the face thing with our younger students. You know, it's been pretty consistent from even our epidemiologist that Ms. Belford had the recorded conversation with, you know, talking about kids 10 and up being able to do it consistently and properly. And plus, those are the students 10 and up that are the most like adults when it comes to spread. So I feel like the language as it has been put in there is, is pretty good. It's good, I won't say pretty good, it's good. But I, I do, I, I'm gonna share this letter this afternoon on my Facebook page cause I think this is a really important resource, um, for our community to see as well.
Did you figure out a way to, cause I was gonna share it yesterday when I got it. And I was like, I just don't have time to figure out how to convert this to something that Facebook will actually show on multiple pages and...
You know what? If nothing else, I'll screenshot and, and, and just, you know, put the pictures up there. Cause it is a PDF file and Facebook doesn't play nicely with PDFs, so I'll see what I can do.
So would you please tag me in that, Ms. Campbell? So that I can also share it without doing the hard work?
I will do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else on K2 or any other aspect of the emergency order?
I just, I have a question on clarification. So the beginning says that if you're six, you need a mask unless you're six feet apart. But then we go down and we break it down for, um, employees with supervisor's approval. A face covering shall not be required for a school district employee provided that the supervisor authorizes the employee to remove their face covering and they're six feet away. So if they're six feet away, if they're in front of the room and their desks are far enough back and they're six feet, do they have to have their supervisor's approval to teach, instruct without a face covering? Or do they need supervisor's approval? Cause the beginning makes it sound like if they're six feet away, they're fine, they can make decisions for themselves. But this statement makes it sound like their supervisor has to allow them to do that.
I see your point, um, and, um, I would read that as the direction coming from the supervisor, like obviously they're not gonna ask the supervisor every time they're six, six feet away. But the direction coming from the supervisor is consistent with being six feet away, it being okay to take it off. But, Mr. Gibbs, do you wanna weigh in there?
Yeah, the intent was if, the, the policy is if you cannot maintain the six feet. So the second part with the and there was intended to be, uh, you have to make sure you're maintaining. So if you got the teachers 10 feet away from the students in the front and they wanna take their mask off, they can do that. But if they're moving around the whole time and they're in and out of the six-foot window, they need to keep their mask on. So the and should be you're maintaining at least six feet of distance, not in and out, but...
It says that in the very first paragraph of the whole document. So then why have this, that they need supervisor's approval to have it off if they're, if they're still six? It says they have to, they need supervisor approval and they must maintain six feet away. It, it kinda conflicts with what's in the beginning. Who put this together?
Yeah, I did. It's mine.
So are you saying that if it's an employee who has gotten supervisor's approval to not wear a mask for, because they have a doctor's note for some...
That, that would just be a general exception.
Okay.
Under there for wearing.
That's the medical certification up there. This is one that's completely separate.
So that, okay, I was gonna say, I was...
Now, if you have an exception, you can do your job and you would not have to. But the people you're working with should have a mask on.
Right.
So it's still not clear to me. Are we going to change it to make it clear or leave it confusing?
If you want to make a recommendation for clarification, that's fine.
I guess, I, I don't know what the will of the board is to change it. Do we want to make teachers have general supervisor approval to take their face masks off when they're over six feet apart? But why would we do that? Because we've already said as a board, if we agree to this, that on number the top, that if you're over six feet apart, you don't have to have a mask.
I see what you're saying.
I will weigh in and suggest that, um, after I read an email that we received this morning, and I don't know if all of us received it, but, um, I am hesitant to give supervisor approval to move away from the policy. I feel like the policy should give the exceptions, but, um, I, I feel like we might be getting ourselves into trouble with some, we have supervisors at all levels of the organization. And if the supervisors don't agree with our expectation or requirement of a mask being worn, they may be tempted to tell their employees that they do not have to wear a mask. And I don't think that's the intent of our efforts here.
Or on the other end, telling them they have to when they're six feet apart. I, I don't, and honestly, the one, the paragraph right before it, students with supervisor's approval. It's kind of the same thing. It's saying the supervisor has to approve and they still have to stay six feet apart. So this, these two paragraphs give whoever the supervisor is authority to either make them wear it when they're over six feet apart or tell them they can take it off when they're over six feet apart, which we've already told them in the beginning of the document. It doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Susan?
So, part of the conversation about having supervisor approval came when I was making the recommendation from the Department of Defense. And they don't just have it per the location, but they also have it go up the chain. So if there's somebody that's out there that has the exception to the rule, it doesn't just stop at the principal's level. It goes to what they would consider their director or deputy superintendent also. Because I'll just flat out say it, I mean, you were being nice about it. But the bottom line is, is that we have some schools that aren't wearing masks. And that is unacceptable. And I'll just tell you, like, uh, if, if, if any of them are listening right now, cut it out, put the damn things on. Because we're not making this policy because we just feel like it. We're making this policy so that we can stay in school and so that we don't impact our health insurance. I mean, the, a thousand other things, from gender gaps to everything else. But, but the bottom line is, is this, we have very good indication that somebody that goes into ICU costs our plan close inwards of $100,000. So these people who are out there saying, well, I may not need it, I may need it. And then they end up, and they end up sick, and then we end up paying for it on our health insurance. Shame on you for not putting the masks on. Your teacher, you set an example, you do it right. So with that said, I agree with you. Once we start leaving it up to some of these areas that may not be putting them on, it, it leaves it alone. I, I just, I'm getting really fired up over the thing, cause what I saw, so...
But when our, the ones that we saw that were this summer were operating under the standards that we had at the time and this policy hadn't been adopted. And I, I was in a school, I don't know if any of you went out for opening day, sorry, I just call opening day. You know, when the teachers were gathered yesterday, I was there. You know, everybody was sitting at the table, even spreading out, you know, they kept, you know, the, the speakers, when they would go up to the front and they were far away from everybody, took them off just for that, you know, so they, because they were distancing and they were talking through the microphone or whatever. But everybody pretty much had them on and, and they were all different kinds of varieties. So I don't, I don't, because I don't want to go out there, people thinking, oh, our teacher's already back yesterday and today and, and everybody's breaking the rule already. I feel like the student one, at least, was supposed to be, cause we talk about the mask break. And I asked, could we have a time when students can say, hey, can I step out in the hall or whatever? And, you know, take a couple breaths without this on my face? That that is kind of what that is. I feel like this is for the students, um, the mask break. Now, the language is, we have it right now, even before the exception section says, you know, when, when social distancing, six feet cannot be adhered to. Now, I take that as if we have a class because of the numbers in e-learning space, this would be in secondary more than elementary, that if we have students, let's say we've only got eight kids in the classroom, they can spread out six feet apart, that they could take their mask off. That's how I take it. As long as, while they're sitting in their desk and they're not roaming around, you know, while they're sitting at their desk and they are away from everybody else, that they can take theirs off. That if this right here in the exception says, students with supervisor's approval, says that they have to ask permission from their teacher before they can do that while they're sitting at their desk, you know, then I think we need to be real clear about that.
Yeah, it, it, we have to get rid of either the beginning that says if you're six feet apart, you don't have to wear it. Or we have to get rid of those two paragraphs that say you have to ask permission and stay six feet apart. Cause they just, they conflict each other. Thoughts, Mr. Gibbs?
How about if we, because to, to Mr. Gibbs's point about people moving around the classroom? So if I currently, I'm at six feet, I can take my mask off indoors. But if I'm gonna walk over and talk to Pam, now I'm, I'm no longer six feet away as I'm passing Cheryl, as I'm, you know what I mean? So what if we changed in the opening paragraph when it says when social distancing cannot be adhered to? Well, no, that would be kind of redundant. Cannot be maintained as opposed to adhered to? Does that clear it up in the beginning?
Are you in the exception section?
No, required face coverings. First sentence. At all times when social distancing, distancing cannot be adhered to or maintained? Or is that just making it muddier?
I, I mean, I think it's, the circumstance that you just rec, would be when it, it can't be adhered to. If I'm walking to the pencil sharpener, if I'm allowed to sharpen my pencil this year, if I'm walking to the pencil sharpener, I'm gonna pass a few people and maybe the teacher. I need to have a mask on because then all of a sudden I'm gonna be not following that. If I'm sitting right next to the pencil sharpener and all I have to do is stand up and do it, I'm not getting closer to anyone, then, you know, we should be good. I think it's, I think it's specific. I guess I, I, I hear Ms. Duskovich's concern, and I do have the same concern. If we have a student who really needs to take a break and they're following the guidelines and they're more than six feet apart from everyone around them, but we have that, a specific teacher who says, who is worried, who says, not in my class. When you're in here, you gotta keep them on the whole entire time, even if you're six, more than six feet apart.
I feel like that's clarified in the top though, in section one.
Okay.
Required to wear a face covering at all times when social distancing cannot be adhered to while on school district property.
Yeah.
Right, they're, they're concerned with the supervisor approval part of it. So I mean, we can take that out, if you wanna take it out. And just leave it as if you can't maintain or you can't adhere to the six foot.
I'm just trying to, is there another circumstance where a student would need to, every other time when they would need to be, they would need to ask, cause it says in the student one, authorizes them, it's listed, like if they are, I think it's like in their medical, if there being medical care, like they're having to, you know, someone, uh, when our nurses have to administer certain medications or whatever, those kinds of things. Those are, those are covered. So, and the exigent circumstances covers that as well.
I understand maybe a supervisor having to give permission if you're within six feet for some strange reason, giving medicine or something of that nature. But I don't understand a supervisor having to give permission if you're more than six feet.
Could be dependent on, uh, what activity is being done as well. Maybe you're starting out in an activity where everybody's six feet, but there's gonna be a lot of movement in the class. So the supervisor, your teacher says, hey, everybody needs to keep their mask on cause people are just gonna be wandering around a lot, moving from station to station. So they want everybody to have a mask on. It's really up to you guys?
Well, we have to cover all our classrooms too. And we do have band, and I think our choruses are all gonna be singing outside. But we do have bands, um, you know, people have been concerned about if you're, when your section's not playing, keep your mask on. I, I mean, uh, I do wanna give our teachers, um, some leeway to, to, to have those instructions when it's appropriate.
Just for my own clarification. Mr. Gibbs, is the, correct me if I'm, the intent of the students with supervisor's approval, I understand that to read that it maintains the determination when six feet can be maintained or adhered to in the teacher or supervisor's determination, not in the student's determination. So that it...
That makes sense.
So that we don't have individual students in a class all saying, no, this is six feet. No, that isn't six feet. It's, it essentially is requiring masks until which time the supervisor says, we're in an environment, we're gonna be able to maintain six feet, you can remove your masks versus then having to respond to 15, 18, 25 students all making their own assessment when six feet is or is not adhered to. Is it, did I?
Yeah, for students, that would be, my intent would be to have the teacher verify. Cause I could easily see a situation where chairs, depending on the class size, the chairs aren't six feet apart and students have three other classes that they think, that are, are six feet apart and they're able to take their mask off. But this one class has 20 kids in it and they're two feet apart. And they can't take their mask off. So they're just gonna have to come in and say, you guys can't take your mask off on this one.
So the intent of that paragraph is just to say the supervisor gets to announce when... when you're six feet apart, basically?
Or.
It gives the, it gives the authority and autonomy to the teacher versus the student. So the teacher is managing the environment, they're not having to address several different individual students, which could become a management challenge.
For the students, for the teacher one, I did not intend for the teacher to have to call their principal up and say, "Can I take my mask off?"
Yeah, that would mean the principal would have to tell the teacher when, when they're six feet up. That just doesn't make.
Right, yeah, I did not intend for that.
Sense.
So do you have a recommended edit to achieve what they have?
No, no, I don't. I mean, I would take them out. Just, I think it's redundant and confusing, but if, I mean, I'm not, whatever you guys want. I just wanted to point out that there was some confusion there, and I think when people read it, it's going to be confusing.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
I'd rather leave it in.
All right, Matt, in?
Yep, leave it the way it is.
Ms. Campbell?
If, if, I wouldn't necessarily want, because of, you know, the discussion we just had, wouldn't want to remove the students one, but the employees one, perhaps. I just, again, same reasons as Duskevich, I think it's redundant.
For the employee one, you're saying?
The employee one, yeah.
So I would, I guess I would err on the side of caution and have redundancy rather than.
So, just so our employees know that might watch this later, does that mean they have to get a general permission, we understand it's not an individual, "Hi, today, I'd like to take this off for 12 minutes," but general permission from their, if they're over six feet, because that's what this says, they need to go to their principal probably today and say, "This year, when I'm six feet away, I need permission from you, principal, to take my mask off to teach." Is that what we're asking our employees, just so they know and understand?
Yeah, no, I would suggest that they are given direction from their supervisor as to the expectations while in the classroom. Like, I would hope that all of our principals are having these conversations with their staff about, "This is when you need to have your mask on, and this is when you can have your mask off."
So does this give authority to our administrators to say, "I'm not comfortable with you taking your mask off, even when you are six feet apart in the classroom," because that's also what I'm getting from this. We have an administrator that wants to be a little bit more strict than what we've said. This kind of gives them the authority to say, "Nope, you all, you can't even take it off when you're six feet away." Am I not understanding that correctly?
All right, so I'll suggest that we take out the employees with supervisor's approval, and then, does that work for everyone? And we'll keep the students?
So what you're saying, that the teacher can make, maintain, that the, can make the decision on whether they are six feet apart and not have to go to the supervisor? So if a supervisor walks in and sees that the teacher is not six feet apart, kids are with their masks off, what's the scenario?
It's, that's under the consequences down in section six.
They get written up, it looks like.
Yeah.
Employees.
Following the collective bargaining agreement, discipline.
As stated, I did not intend on teachers calling the principal, saying, "Hey, is it okay if I take my mask off?"
Right.
Yeah.
It's just once we start opening up doors, things start to happen.
Yeah, the expectation in the policy overall is they have to have it on when they're not, when they're out, inside of six feet.
Well, and I would suggest that we all probably need to be prepared to revisit and make adjustments as we go on this, because.
I will clarify, this is just for the 90 days. Emergency policies are only good for 90 days. If the board approves it tonight, I will have to start rulemaking and turn this into a generic emergency procedure policy for infectious conditions that would apply in a general scope outside of COVID.
So I had a question on that, as far as the policies that you're developing. We don't have anything in place right now that you're adding to, or creating a brand new policy?
Yeah, it would be a brand new policy. And that's, one of the amendments I was gonna say is where it says at the top, "Future policies, take that out." We found in 8420, it's an emergency management, emergency preparedness, and emergency response agencies policy under operations, that we would just put it under there, probably as an 8420.02.
Okay.
That would apply across the district.
I know you're just getting started, but have you already looked at Neola, or do we already have something that we're looking at?
Yeah, Neola does not have, like, one that would require face masks, so.
Okay.
That would be.
Yet, they don't have it.
We're gonna have to just.
Well, you did a pretty good job coming up with this from scratch.
It was, yeah, pulled from several sources around the state. The FSBAA has been kicking out what everybody's doing, so I just kind of pulled from here and there.
So I do have, did anyone else have comments in any other section? I do have one under section two, Mr. Gibbs, the very first line, "While maintaining social distancing, six feet minimum as much as feasible."
Okay.
A face covering is not required. That, "As much as feasible," makes me cringe a little bit. Does anyone else have concern there?
If it relates to the exceptions.
Right, like, so if you have a medical exception, and you don't wear your mask, but your chair is four feet from your neighbor, there's nothing you can really do about it. I mean, we can't really punish that student, because the classroom setup and the number of students in the class don't allow for six feet.
And I think, it just goes to show that our pre-K and primary, I was talking about our pre-K and primary students who may not wear a mask under our exceptions, they're gonna, we're still gonna try to socially distance them as far as possible.
Again, I'm happy to change it however you guys want. And going to the pre-K, I worded it that way, just because I didn't necessarily feel like the board was like, "Let's move all these pre-K through second graders to e-learning," simply because they are the way they are, and they refuse to wear their masks.
I see your point there, absolutely. And then there was one other one. Face shields. The second sentence there, "Faculty are encouraged to use a face shield in lieu of a mask when the instruction requires the students to be able to see a teacher's face." So I think what we're saying is, if you absolutely can't wear a mask, we want you to at least wear a face shield.
Can I jump in here? I think also we need to pay attention to our, our hard of hearing students, because a lot of them read lips.
Hang on, Ms. McDougal, can you scoot up a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I should turn it on. So what I think part of this relates to is our hard of hearing students who read lips, who depend on, "I need to be able to see my teacher's lips." So I think that's important, that we have that in there, and I think there will be times when a teacher will just have the face shield because of students in her cla, in his or her classroom. That's my thought on that.
I agree. My only concern is that we know that face shield, I mean, ideally, face shields are meant to be worn with a mask for best protection for all, right? So I almost, like, the first time I read this, I was like, "What do you mean? We encourage faculty to use a face shield instead of a mask?" Like, I don't.
Can we change it to allowed, instead of encouraged?
That's what I'm thinking. Or, you know, in, in, when instruction requires the students to be able to see a teacher's face, clear masks or face shields may be utilized, as opposed to them thinking that we are encouraging them to wear. And I had, I spoke with Dr. Mullins, I, I have serious concerns about people understanding masks, and how to wear masks, and how to properly care for masks, and how to determine what mask is best for you. And so I had asked that we kind of put together some educational materials as well to share with folks, because what I don't want is our teachers thinking that face shields are as effective as masks, and then making decisions based on that, that's putting them at risk. And quite frankly, I have the same concern with the N95 masks. The N95 or the KN95 are going to keep stuff out, which is safer for our teachers, but it's not keeping stuff in, which, you know, puts anyone not wearing the KN95 at risk. So there's some, just some intricacies there. But I, would you guys be good if we just amended that language a little bit, to say that they may wear a clear mask or a face shield in those situations?
That works for me, yeah.
As opposed to they should?
I was just looking in the section above on the types of face covering. We don't include face shields in section three, do we? So those are the, I'm not saying them. So that would be that this is the time, the one, you know, the opportunity, the certain circuit. So even those teachers who are using a face shield, the rest of the time, they'll need to have a mask when they're not doing that. If they're walking, you know, aligned to class or whatever, to class, to lunch, or, you know, wherever they're going.
Ms. Moore, I'm gonna clarify, maybe put her on the spot. I believe we are also obtaining face coverings with a plastic, so an individual can wear a mask with a cutout of, you know, some kind of a plastic covering, so you can wear a mask and still see an individual's mouth. So to see, you know, the pronunciation and that sort of thing. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So I don't know if Mr. Gibbs had that. That's a recent development, so I don't know if Mr. Gibbs had that when developing the language. We can certainly make the appropriate modification.
Yeah.
Well, it's still considered a face mask. It's just a clear face mask, so it's covered.
Any commercially approved face mask would be approval here. So, I mean, if you guys wanna, I don't know if you wanna change anything on that. If you wanna say face shields aren't acceptable in lieu of that, then that's fine, I can take it out.
I, I don't have a problem with language as it is, and changing the word encouraged to allowed, so that we just, you know.
Right.
So the teachers understand they're allowed to do that, when it's like Ms. McDougal, Ms. McDougal shared, you know, it could be hard of hearing, or it could be like our young learners who are needing to see, you know, mouths.
Ms. Klein, I think you wanted to weigh in?
I did. The face, the, clear plastic masks have not been ordered yet. Procurement's working on obtaining a quote for that. I was one of the clericalists, I was talking to Don Richard, and so the, for, I know possibly for the ESE teachers they have, but for K2 teachers, where we were looking at that, those have not been ordered. The face shield was ordered for all teachers, so when they are doing small group, and you need to see the ma, the mouth, that was the purpose. Or when the teacher is standing at the board and teaching six feet away, that face shield was for that purpose, so that you can see and hear more clearly than the muffled you get with a mask.
Makes perfect sense, thank you. So is any board member opposed to changing that to faculty are allowed to use a face shield in lieu of a mask when the instruction requires the students to be able to see a teacher's face?
Oh, that's fine.
Matt, you go with that? Tina, you go with that? Mr. Gibbs, you go with that change?
Yep, so, just so I'm clear, what do you want it to state? So I can get this language, it's gonna have to be an amendment tonight, so I wanna make sure whoever's making the motion knows exactly what to state.
We're, it'll be an amended motion?
Because this is already posted, so someone's gonna have to amend with all of these.
This evening.
Yeah, well, I think.
Tonight, yeah. I, it'll be ready, but I just need to know what to put in the motion, so whoever's making it knows exactly how to state it.
Got it. So, second sentence, faculty are allowed, as opposed to encouraged.
Allowed, okay.
We all go with that?
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on the emergency order?
And I do, I do have one that was raised. I did have an IEP 504 section when I was running it through Cabinet. I think it got removed. Dr. Sullivan's not in here, I think she was the one who recommended. Chris, do we need to put that back in?
We do. There are a lot of, with the medical certification, I appreciate that a lot of parents are gonna wanna go out and make appointments with their providers, but we already have a lot of documented medical concerns in 504 and IEPs that would serve just as well for our school's notification, that a child is gonna have a problem with a, with a face mask.
So, but, the part that got cut red, IEP or 504 plan in the exception section, and it was defined as a face covering shall not be required for any student whose IEP or 504 plan specifically exempts the student from wearing a covering. I can stick that back in if the board's good with that language.
I would actually like it to read, documents a medical concern, and bring it back up to the medical certification language. What you just read would require IEP meetings, whereas we already have medical concerns documented in 504 plans and IEPs, sensory issues that would go right back up into what the medical certification states.
All right, just shoot me the language that you want. If the board's good with amending it, I'll get that in the script tonight.
I have a question. So if a child has an IEP that says they have severe anxiety and sensory issues, does that mean they don't have to go back to the doctor and get a note that specifically says they don't wear masks? That means somebody within our district will determine that this is an, you know, an acceptable exemption?
That would be correct.
Thank you. Who is going to make that decision?
That would be the staffing specialist would have the IEP team review the IEP and say, "Yes, this is what it means," so that we wouldn't have to actually have a whole IEP meeting, we would just review the IEP.
How many IEPs do we have in our district, in 504s, roughly?
That's a number. I try not to answer number questions. A lot, but it, there are going to be not a lot that specifically address face masks. And so as we're asked to review for a parent who, who either can't make an appointment with a physician, or a physician who is not going to make that statement, that a child isn't gonna be, have to wear a face mask, we will pull that IEP in the 504, and we'll review it.
What I'm trying to ask is, any child that has sensory issues with an IEP, all those parents are, may potentially come forward right now and say, "We want your staff to review and give us an exemption." What is that gonna do to our staff that works on IEPs that needs to approve that exception?
Well, each school has a support specialist, so that would be the first level of pulling the IEP and seeing if it says anything about a sensory issue. And again, a lot of our support specialists very, very much know our students and their IEPs and what's in them.
So do they have the authority right there to say, "Oh, yeah, their IEP says this," and?
I would think that authority lies with the administrator in that building, but the staffing specialist would make that recommendation to the principal.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And that's what I, I've had a couple of people reach out to me with questions about our students with IEPs, and I've directed them to reach out to the principal of their school, because they have the information there and the staff there to get the information to make the determination. So I'm sure our local medical providers appreciate that exception. Ms. Moore, thank you. All right, anything else on the emergency order? Mr. Gibbs, anything else on the emergency order that we need to consider? Are you comfortable with direction moving forward?
Yep, I'll work with Pam on getting that. So it's understandable what needs to be amended tonight.
And you'll provide it to anyone who wants to make a motion on the item?
I'll shoot it to everybody, and you guys can decide who wants to move to amend.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. There being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.